Good evening and welcome to the Portland City Council Regular Meeting of November 26, 2019. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and taking a moment to silence our military veterans and first responders.
(Inaudible)
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 One quick please call me. Dave Velo?
Here.
Skolfredman? Excused. Yes, Skolman? Here. Roger Hickman? Excused. Ryan Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips? Here. Lisa Sardi? Present. Council, you received the October 8, 2019, as well as the October 22, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes if they are written?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
One correction to the minutes. October 22, third reading is ordinance 2519. It states that I moved to adopt ordinance 2519. There was present that night. I think that motion I think was Mrs. Sardi actually. So if I could be changed, I'm fine with it. Yes, word?
I'll ask the clerk to make the change to the minutes, recognizing that was not that, or excuse me, Mrs. Sardi, that moved. Have a second to that change? Second to the change by Mrs. Sardi. All those in favor of making the change to the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Change is noted.
I move approve the minutes as stated.
And I have seen motion to approve is stated for Mr. Velo. A second for, excuse me, Ms. Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes stand approved. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding the compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. Will now move to our guest presentation portion of the evening. Or excuse me, public comments. No guests this evening, public comments, I'm sorry. Who are they? Ashton Fisher, 19-year-old master.
So my possibly baby issue that's been going on with this community recently is the reworking of both the sewer system and the roads continuously. I feel that the big question at hand is any notions with like the priority of what will be done? For example, what do you plan, what has already taken into action and what do you plan to do next? I figure that this would be a good notion for the regular citizens here who are gathered in order to figure out, to help be familiar with this new changes going by that is starting to affect the community for the better.
Chris Snyder?
Thank you, thank you very much. It's so perfect that you're here this evening because in a little bit we're going to talk about some of the specifics of that plan and which road will be addressed with water lines and sewer lines and which roads, all the roads potentially will be resurfaced. So you'll find out all the details here in a few minutes. So stick around.
All right. Thank you, Ashton. All right, well number two, Mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Before I get to that, I just have a few comments. Why does everyone laugh?
(Inaudible)
I'm sorry.
Is your mom there?
No, no, she was not here. Yeah. Well, first of all, I would like to apologize to those that are here tonight because I was not able to attend two weeks ago. You did not want to hear, I was under the weather and it was a big day because we celebrated 40 years of service by Mr. George Wilber as Law Director for the City of Port Clinton. Forty years is a long time and just to put that in perspective, that would have been in 1980. In 1980, the Rubik's Cube was invented. In 1980, CNN had its very first transmission. In 1980, Pink Floyd released The Wall. In 1980, Venus Williams, McCully Culkin, and Kim Kardashian were born. In 1980, and this one's, I threw this one in here for Mr. Martin, the Pittsburgh Steelers won the Super Bowl, Super Bowl XVI, or XIV, which is 14 I believe, beating the Rams 31 to 19. In 1980, the Miracle on Ice, and I can remember where I was when I heard that score, the US beat the Russians in 1980. In 1980, Loretta Lynn released Coal Miner's Daughter and the subsequent movie. 1980, Mount St. Helens erupted. Remember that? 1980. In 1980, The Empire Strikes Back by Star Wars was released. In 1980, Hat Man came out. In 1980, The Shining by Stephen King, the movie was released. And our friend Larry Bird was Rookie of the Year in the NBA in 1980. 1980 also saw John Lennon killed. And in 1980, I was in the third grade. Mr. Wilber, thank you very much for multiple decades of service to our community. I wasn't here before, so I'd like to start with another round of applause. Do you still have your Rubik's Cube?
Yes.
Well, I want to congratulate the downtown on a fabulous sipping shop. I was overwhelmed at my inability to find a parking space in downtown Port Clinton Saturday night. It was spectacular. The shops were full, the restaurants were full. It seemed to be a good night for all. Special thank you to the city crews that spent hours erecting, getting, erecting, and decorating the Christmas tree as well as all the other Christmas lights. I've heard nothing but positive comments about that. There are 3,500 lights on the tree at Perry and Madison. We just hope it's still there tomorrow after these high winds. And a special thank you to Mike and Deborah, I'm going to butcher this, I think it's Henneken or Henkin from Danbury Township for donating that tree. And since we're on the holiday spirit here, December 7, which is Saturday, downtown will be celebrating another event where Santa Claus comes to town at the Clinton House from 3 to 5 with a parade down Second Street from the old community market to Adams Street Park with another tree lighting ceremony at 6:00 PM in Adams Street. And if I may, Madam President, may I be excused over to the laptop to talk about this infrastructure project? Thank you. Ms. Phillips, do you mind grabbing those lights? Well, as was alluded to earlier by the Boy Scouts here, we have been talking as a community about an infrastructure project for quite some time. And I just want to take a few moments, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, to tell you where we were, where we're going, and go from there if I can hit the right button. Okay, oops, went the wrong way. Went the wrong way. There we go. You didn't see that. We're going to come back to it. Going to spend a few minutes just recapping, a quick recap of where we've been. We're closer to that final plan. Again, if you remember, we've been saying this is not the final plan, this is not the final plan, but we're getting very, very close to the final plan. And then what's going to take place as we move forward? You know, we spent several months meeting with the community, talking about this plan, collecting data, talked about initially about it being a ballot initiative going on the agenda, they're going on the ballot, and used terms like EDU, Equivalent Dwelling Unit, and approximately $20 per dwelling per EDU in the city. So after each one of our public meetings, we asked individuals to fill out a quick questionnaire. And one of the questions was related to the project. Is it not needed? Is it too big in scope? Is it the right size? Or should it be larger? And as you can see, overwhelmingly large majority of folks said it's needed. And this goes back to discussions I had in the community about the top five, the five points of light that Mr. Martin refers to, that roads and infrastructure have been the utmost priority for the community for quite some time. And another one of those questions was, should council just go forward and take this action or should it be placed on the ballot? And again, if this were an actual vote, it would be a landslide going for council just to take this action. Well, Pogomar Design Group, and there's representatives here tonight, was involved in all of those public meetings and heard the comments and saw the comments, so took it upon themselves to take some of the numbers that were originally offered that were, in some cases, two, three, four years old, and bring them up to modern standards. And originally, we were looking at a $19.25 million project adjusted for inflation with modern, up-to-date costs. We're looking now at about a $19.99 million project with the water and sewer aspect, the EDU aspect being just over $13 million, and the road aspect being about six and a half, 6.6 million.
Slow.
Oh, did I go too far? Oh, sorry. Forgive me. So when we break down the EDUs for just the water and sewer portion, you'll see that water is at $7.50 per month and the sewer portion is $5.53, meaning that before any USDA grant money is acquired to assist with that portion of the project, you're looking at about $13.03 per EDU for the City of Port Clinton. Well, what about the road portion of that? Well, as these numbers evolved, the folks at Pogomar realized that the ratio of dollars and materials associated with the water and sewer side of what we're doing became kaddawapas to the roadside. The roads started to creep up there and it wasn't really feasible or amenable to approach the USDA to help fund the project as one giant infrastructure project. So the workaround that's been created is a hybrid of the big project, Project A and Project B. Project A for above ground and Project B for below ground. And I'm going to come back to Project A for a moment. Let's talk about Project B. Again, that would be the water lines, sewer lines, and any roads that would be impacted by the work done underground. And again, those numbers are what you see. Project A, above ground, would be all of the other roads that are deemed necessary outside the scope of Project B. 6.6 million, how would we pay for that? And that would be a traditional levy with bond issuance. So how do we do the math on that? Well, every time there's a levy anywhere in the world, oops, they use that mythical $100,000 home. The $100,000 home has an assessed value of 35% or $35,000. The mills are at 3 mills and that millage value is just a mathematical constant that's out there. So you see the formula that's created there where you take the assessed value times the mills, times that mathematical constant. And for that $100,000 home, you're looking at about $105 a year in taxes, broken out then to about $8.50 per month. Now, again, your taxes aren't billed monthly, but to continue that conversation of what it's going to cost me per month, I've broken it down per month. And you'll also see less any rollbacks. Residential property has some built-in rollbacks that the state will reimburse, so the city is not out any money. There's a 10% rollback if it's your primary residence. There is an additional rollback if you've lived in the property for so long. This does not take into consideration any of those rollbacks. So, you know, you see what it equates to on the standard $100,000 home, but how many homes are really at that $100,000 threshold? These next two slides are some real-world examples of how this portion, Plan A or Project A, would play out. 1003 Fulton Street happens to be my parents' home. And you can see where their home is assessed and what the values would be as you work your way down.
Mike, that one.
Oh, did I hit them? Is that it?
No.
There we go.
There you go.
Sorry. 1003 Fulton is my parents' home. 534 Fremont Road is the home that I grew up in, formerly my parents' home. And you can see how that falls. Did it continue?
Nope.
417?
Nope.
There you go.
One more.
417-7. That's my aunt's home. And 220 Linden happens to be my cousin's home. Well, in addition to residential property, you also have some commercial properties. That North Monroe Street is the Jet Express.
(Inaudible).
Oh, goodness gracious. What's happening here? There we go. The North Monroe Street is the Jet Express. Those two properties on Perry and Jefferson equate to the R. Gaskin and Suites. We also then have some, what I'll call, mega commercial properties. 123 Maple Street is the new Bassett's City Market, that whole strip mall, the former Kroger's behind, and the L-shaped strip mall where Chef's Best Catering is located. And then the 1846 East Perry Street is the other end of this building where the Sutton Center is located. Now, we also have condo developments here in the City of Port Clinton. 206 F Waterfront is one of 150 condos in that development. And as you can see, their appraised value is much higher than anything my family owns here in the City of Port Clinton. And again, there are 150 of those at that same level. And 1603 Waters Edge are one of the birdhouses for comparison's sake. So if we take those figures that we just saw and break them down by month, and again, the blue column isn't billed monthly, but for discussion's sake on this slide, you can see that the residential component, the primary residence of the City of Port Clinton, again, assuming that everything south of Perry Street is a primary residence and the condos are everything north of Perry Street are second homes, there's some overlap there, but just for conversation's sake, you'll see that you're in that $20 range for most of the residents of the City of Port Clinton. And that got me thinking, what is the real value of a non-condo residence in the City of Port Clinton? Well, the county auditor has actually made that process somewhat easy. Every three years, the auditor reevaluates, reappraises property throughout the county. And they've broken the properties down by neighborhood. For condos, it's real simple. If you're in the Shores condo complex, that's your neighborhood. If you're at the Harbor side, that's your neighborhood. For things south of Perry Street, where we all live, they group similar sized homes, homes that may be built in the same timeframe, they've created, there's a massive formula and matrix to create these neighborhoods. So if you pull up all of the 27 or 28 neighborhoods within the City of Port Clinton, you can get some averages. And in the City of Port Clinton, on average, there are zero homes appraised at $300,000 and greater. Now, the reality is, yes, there are, but on average, there are none. There's .7% that are 250 to 300,000. Again, 0% in that price range, 3.9% at 150 to 200. And we finally made our way down to that $100,000 Mendoza line, and as you can see, there's 11.4%. So if you take the numbers that you see right now, that's nowhere near 100%. The vast majority of the homes within the City of Port Clinton are appraised in that 50 to 100,000. And believe it or not, under 50,000 is actually more than everything above that line. So the average non-condo residence in the City of Port Clinton is 82613. So if we revisit our initial formula of 100,000, but plug in 82613, the average levy would be $6.22 for that non-condo resident. Again, I've got nothing to do in the day, so that got me thinking a little bit more. What is the average price of the condo here in Port Clinton since we just found out what the non-condo is? And it's just over 131,000. So their taxes would break out to about $11.48, again, on average. So using that same spreadsheet that I used earlier with my family and so forth, you can see that the average residence for the City of Port Clinton is a quarter over 20 bucks and the average second home is just under. What does that mean for you? How can I figure out what this is going to cost me living on Fifth Street or Jackson or whatnot? What is that blue question mark? Well, it's real simple. You can go to the Ottawa County Auditor's website. In the upper right-hand corner, you can plug in your street address or your last name. And, you know, keep in mind, if your last name is Smith, there may be a great search to happen. If your last name is Schmuckatello, there may just be one or two names, no one or two names out there. Click on search, look through the list, find your property. And again, if you type in the address, sometimes it's important to put east, west, north, south. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes 11th is 11TH, sometimes it's spelled out 11th. But once you find your property, you click on it, and right in the center of the page is what your assessed value is. And then you just simply use the formula that you just saw. So where do we go from here? Very shortly, the administration is going to be asking for a request for qualifications from qualified engineering firms, looking for scopes of services for both Project A and Project B. And very shortly, City Council will see some legislation moving forward in two different directions with Project A and Project B. Now, I don't want to put them on the spot, but since they're not staring at me, I'm going to. Mrs. Hovis and Mr. Trolle, you know, chances are the makeup of, this isn't going to get done by the end of the year. So some of the people sitting up there are going to be in different spots, some of them that are sitting up there now won't be. You, obviously, the two of you will be up there. And I know you've been involved from day one. When we met with the individual council members early on in this, you were involved in that discussion because we knew this process would carry on. I think you've been to some of the public meetings that we've had, you've been to committee meetings, I know you've talked to people, you stop me all the time. You know, if timing works out, the legislation moving forward might appear in front of you right after you take the oath of office, within a couple meetings of, do you feel comfortable in understanding this project and the scope of it at this point? Okay. Well, the question earlier from the young scout was, which roads are going to be impacted? And this is going to be a map, a little different than what you saw before, and I'm hoping that you're able to see it. If not, I can pass around the paper copy I have with the blue being the water and the other colors being the sewer and sanitary and storm sewers. So every time you see a colored line, that road, for the most part, unless it's in the boulevard, will be replaced as part of Project B, the below ground. Every other road, with the exception of a few that have been redone, will be improved as long as the voters in the City of Port Clinton authorize Project A. There are some individuals here from the Pogomar Design Group. Does anyone have any questions, comments? I'll leave this up for a little bit longer. And if anybody wants this PowerPoint, I'll be happy to email it to you as well. And I know my big finale was, you know, kind of ruined, but there we go. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns, discussions? Does that understand why we had to break it down and move forward? It's kind of a hybrid of what we've been talking about from the get-go.
Mr. Snyder, we'll go through what you said about the color coding here. I see the key, but you said road pavement. Can you repeat that?
Oh, sure, sure. Wherever you see the color, for the most part, there may be some water lines that aren't in the road, and these guys, the engineers, may be able to answer that, but wherever you see a colored line, chances are that road's going to be dug up. And as part of Project B, the underground stuff, below ground, that road will be taken care of. So Project A, for the most part, again, there are some exceptions, like Jefferson, which is being taken care of in downtown Madison and Second, and a few others that were already, that are still usable, will be discussed in Project A, above ground. Make that clear as mud?
No, I got it.
Okay, cool.
Cool. So, Mr. Snyder, so even though where the lines will be replaced includes the repaving, resurfacing, that's not part of the roads resurfacing because it's different?
Greg, Jack, anything you want to add, comments, questions? Did I screw up anything?
I think you're good. Let me spin over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you gave in the survey responses, you gave percentages. How many were there? What was the original number?
Approximately 200, 197, 198.
The one thing, Mayor, we might point out is the water lines are a little different than we showed in previous meetings because of the city staff had marked up the lines they thought were important and where they might be different than we originally showed from the original infrastructure report in the city completed early 2000s. So this is the revised amount of water line. And what it does is try to encapsulate neighborhoods that had poor fire protection and give them service within 500 feet of fire hydrant either direction so everybody has the lowest insurance rate we can do with distance from a firefight. And that's what we've tried to do differently at this time.
There's, one thing I neglected to mention, there's not enough time to get Project A on the ballot by March of 2020. It'll more than likely be in November 2020, should council deem it necessary to put it on the ballot.
Still, I think to point out, I think the EDU charges that we've shown are based on zero grants. You should be eligible for a USDA grant, something that they would have 30%, so the numbers will need to go down.
The original USDA office is in (inaudible), so that's one of the things that we've been talking there. And Mr. Martin about is to assume, to route, to talk directly to the USDA office and then start that grant process. So if the judge finds anything, discovers if they're successful, it's up to him now to try to.
All right.
Port Clinton is eligible. We've talked to him twice in three years, once recently and once three years ago, to verify their eligibility. So again, subject to money being available to the agency, we could get off with that
Well, no other comments or questions? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Can you guys give a per foot, above ground per foot, below ground cost at the present time?
We could, but so the, you're talking about the infrastructure alone, so the prices for water is the cheapest, about $100 per foot. Sanitary is the most expensive, the $200, plus stormwater is about $140. That excludes the paving. The paving workers on top of that, doesn't really have a linear price, it has a $200 per cubic yard price. Okay, so that's how the estimates are based on the current.
Thank you. With that, the only final thing on my report is go Bucks, beat the Blue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the auditor is not with us this evening. The treasurer is visiting family for the holiday. The law directors report. Thank you. Safety Service Directors report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just an update regarding the Woodlands. I know everybody's probably seen, there's activity there, the excavation's taking place. Just wanted to point out, there'll probably be continued lane closures on the westbound lane on Perry Street. There's a cruiser out there that we're placing each day. There's a cruiser out there that we're placing each day. And just to give everybody a heads up, to expect that. Probably through December 6th, if the weather continues as predicted and we stay on schedule, excavation there will be complete by December 6th. So certainly, everybody's heard the weather that's expected the next couple of days. We are continuing our leaf pickup. I would stress to everyone that, please spread the word, don't... If we get brush and trees and limbs come down, don't put those in with your leaves. We are not picking up piles. If we go to move piles of leaves and we find other debris other than leaves, we're not taking them. It damages our machine. We've twice had to stop picking up leaves already this season to repair the equipment. So we just ask, please don't do that. If we take a lot of storm damage because of wind, we're out trimming some trees that were already on the list. Thank you to the tree commission and that list that exists. We were able to get out preemptively the last couple of days in preparation for some extremely high winds that are going to start this evening through tomorrow, upwards of 50 miles an hour. So if we get storm damage, we're prepared for that. And we will probably do another brush pickup if necessary immediately next week. We'll just watch the weather, be our social media accounts or our website. We'll put that information out so everybody's... Please don't... Tell your neighbors, do not mix re- leaves and brushes. It's just really bad. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Chiefs report.
Yes, thank you. Yesterday, we extended a provisional job offer to our newest patrol officer from our recent civil service examination that was held. He has a tentative start date of December 9th. And the next council meeting, I'll be able to release his name, once he passes all the examinations that the city requires him to take. I too would like to take this time. I was not present last time. George, thank you for everything that you've done for the city and for myself over the years. And last, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. That was all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Chief is attending training. We'll move to correspondence. Council, at the last council meeting, we had tabled a stock transfer from the Ohio Division of Land Control, transferring stock from... This remains debatable. It's Chelo Grande, Cilo Grande. I did not take Spanish, so I am at a disadvantage. But transferring stock from, I'm going to say, Cilo Grande LLC, doing business as Rosie's Heart and Grill, to Kevin M. Lowe and Scott T. Corbin, 50% to Kevin, 50% to Scott. Does council wish to take any action on the second?
Madam President, I move that council waive its right to object.
Motion from Mr. Velo to waive, second from Ms. Phillips. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Velo?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes. This is clearly, I'll get you a complete panel and send it in. All right. Moving on with correspondence. Council, you did receive the Emergency Services Committee meeting minutes dated November 19, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the correspondence as stated? Madam President, I move to accept the correspondence as stated. Motion to approve correspondence for Ms. Phillips. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Velo. Call her in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Correspondence is approved as stated. We'll move to the readings of ordinances and resolutions. This evening, we have no third readings. We also have no second readings. We'll move to new readings. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 26-19?
Ordinance 26-19. Ordinance appropriating certain funds for the operation of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio.
Does council wish to take any action on ordinance 26-19? Seeing none, ordinance 26-19 will be moved to a second reading at our next regular meeting on December 10, 2019. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 27-19?
Ordinance 27-19. An ordinance authorizing the chief of police entering into an agreement with the state of Ohio, Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance for the operation of the Port Clinton power control and appropriate funds.
Does council wish to take any action on ordinance 27-19? Seeing none, ordinance 27-19 will be moved to a second reading at our next meeting on December 10, 2019. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 28-19?
Ordinance 28-19. Ordinance in lending sections 301.12, 375.03A, 505.11, 517.01YY, 549.08, 549.09A, and 93305 of the city of Port Clinton, qualified ordinances in dealing sections 549.01, 549.02, 549.03, 549.04, 549.05, 549.06, 549.07, 549.11, and 599.99 of the city of Port Clinton, qualified ordinances relating to the ownership, possession, purchase, other acquisition, transport, storage, carrying, sale, other transfer, manufacturer, transit, taxation, keeping, and recording of loss or theft of firearms. They're components of their ammunition declared emergency.
What?
Listen. I was counting quick before. Does council wish to take any action on ordinance 28-19?
The ordinance is 171 pages long.
Seeing none, we're going to move ordinance 28-19 to its second reading at December 10, 2019. We will now move to business from the floor. Start with Lisa Sardi.
I also attended the Sip and Shop last week. It was very nice. It was nice to see people down there shopping in our businesses. The treaty looks great. I think the city workers can put all that together. There might be December 7th, so... The newly elected city official swearing-in will be on December 4th at 7:00 PM prior to the last meeting of the year, and I'll invite you to attend. Also, Mr. Martin, could you update us on the status of the probationary employees for the service department?
I'd be happy to. We do have, currently have, two probationary employees at the service department. And one of them is not, I believe is not going to be completing his probation. We have an opening. We contacted the Civil Service Commission, who will be meeting, I believe, tomorrow. They've announced a public meeting. And they will be giving a test for semi-skilled labor sometime in early next year to fill that position.
The last three, I would just like to wish I wanted to... Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. I think things are going well in the city at the present time. It's just really comforting to see that all three things are happening and a number of people are coming. It is difficult to find a proper space sometimes. Happy Thanksgiving, all.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman?
Thank you, Madam President. If you didn't get a chance, go to Sip and Shop, which I have a park at the post office. They always have any parking in the slip. Small Business Saturday is the Saturday, the 30th. We can go down to the businesses. They should have stuff going on, specials, deals. I'm going to cancel the 12/23 LRO meeting. It would have to be cut short because of the strike and the concert at night. So on 12/23, we'll not be at LRO. December 9th, Bistro 163 is a community dinner. Anybody can attend that. It's free. If you can't pay, you can pay it forward. There's only small plates right now. We can buy a meal, give a meal. They've served thousands of meals in our community, people that necessarily have four meals. So it's great to support people out there. And I just recognize that everybody across the community dinner, have a good time. I wish everybody safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Mr. Hill?
Another for me, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Velo?
Thank you, Madam President. Last week at the Planning and Development Committee meeting we took up, the mayor's request to look at disposal of the city's property located at 131 Madison Street. We approved several motions related to that. So I have in front of all members of council, and I think folks on this end of the table have it as well, some permission and instruction on how to go about doing that within the Ohio Price Code and what the state's allowed to do. I'm looking at motion one right now, council. I move that the city shall dispose of the real estate located at 131 Madison Street by sale of its participation. The Ottawa County Community Improvement Corporation is authorized by ORC Chapter 1724 for the purposes of reclamation, rehabilitation, and reutilization of vacant, abandoned, ex or closed property within the city.
The motion for the disposal of the real estate located at 131 Madison Street? I will second. Second from Mrs. Sardi.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
Move that the real estate located at 131 Madison Street is determined not to be necessary for municipal purpose.
The motion stating that 131 Madison is not necessary for municipal purpose? I will second. Second from Mrs. Sardi. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
This is one that the Planning Development Committee passed last week, relates to ORC Chapter 1724 as a requirement.
Further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
I move that the real estate located at 131 Madison Street is determined not to have been, one, a city park or any park thereof; two, land in the city acquired for park purposes or any park thereof; or, three, land in the city previously designated by the city as a park or any park thereof.
I have a motion stating that 131 was not a city park, any park thereof.
I don't give them people.
Don't have to do the whole thing. I will second. Mrs. Sardi, thank you for that.
Madam President?
Further discussion, please?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
This relates to issue six, since the city acquired the park through Ottawa County Land Bank. I'll remember that. The city transferred $19,000 off that cost related to that tear down of the building that we needed for mileage and access. Sit there. Never once have we designated it as a council or administration as a park. It never has been a part of Marshall 4 of the city, but I can't remember the last time. In any picture have I ever seen that not made building since the city was in...
Further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Kate Velo?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
I move that the sale price of the real estate located at 131 Madison Street shall be not less than the amount of funds paid by the city to Ottawa County Land Bank, which resulted in city ownership of the property of $19,000, and shall be not less than the appraised value of $23,500.
The motion, I will second. But a second from Mrs. Sardi. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
This is council enforcement's desire to prove that we would earn our money back from which we've taken for it, which I thought we never should have had to pay into it in the first place. So I'm happy to hand that back. And Mr. Snyder says that it's appraised at $23,500, and we should not sell it for less than $200. So that's all this motion is. And I would hope the administration would agree with this. Looks like they do.
Further discussion?
Is there a negotiating room if there's an offer just under that? These motions you're making, I guess, are giving correction to the administration as to council's desire. Before any of this will be effective, there has to be legislation preparing, and ordinance will have to be adopted by council that would authorize us to say, oh, make these various findings. That ordinance will have to be adopted by at least two-thirds of the vote of council. So all you're doing right now is giving corrections, so the filed document or documents will be presented to you for adoption at some point in the future.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kate Velo?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Motion has been adopted. Excuse me, approved. Excuse me, approved. The motion is approved.
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
Just one last one. I move that the city through the Ottawa County Community Improvement Corporation shall structure the real estate purchase agreement so that all fees plus expenses incurred by OCCIC acting as the city's agent fall into the purchaser.
Further discussion? Excuse me. I will second. Second from Mrs. Sardi. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
This came up at the Planning Development Committee meeting as well, which will be passed, and ideas to minimize expenses that the city incurred. And it was felt by all in the room that having those fees would be picked up by the purchaser as opposed to the seller.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kate Velo?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Mr. Velo, would you have anything else to add?
The Planning and Development Committee meeting is going to be held next week, December 3rd, it's very scheduled. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Velo. As Mr. Velo...
I know this is out of turn, but you were talking about the Sip and Shop. Has there been any issues with the MORA? Have I heard any?
Chief, do you have...
And I apologize again for that just popped in my head and I should have asked for it.
Any issues with MORA that you can't cheat?
I'm going to defer to the Safety Service Director at this point. We have not had any complaints regarding the MORA or any issues that I'm aware of from an enforcement standpoint. We've been monitoring the trash and things like that, you know, our cups making their ways into trash cans. There, we... I fielded a complaint regarding the serving of alcohol by non-permet premises to customers. It really is not a MORA issue. It happens to be within the MORA area. And we're going to, the chief and I have already discussed it, and we are going to work on a more of an educational thing so that folks understand in the future if an event like that, the shopkeepers decide to do something, so that they understand that they don't want to jeopardize their businesses. We want it to be an educational process. We don't want it to affect the MORA. But to answer your question, MORA, we've not had any issues yet. We do have the smallest... It's educational, there's really not a MORA issue. We do have the smaller, it's educational, there's really not a MORA issue, we just don't want it to become.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize.
All right, as Mrs. Sardi mentioned during her floor time, our last meeting, at the last council meeting, council moved to change the last meeting day from the 24th because it falls on Christmas Eve to the 23rd. So just a reminder about that. And seeing no further business?
Madam President, I move this August body adjourned.
I will second. Second from Mrs. Sardi, a motion in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Being adjourned.